Check it out?
Check it out.
Here we go.
It's working.
Okay, welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 1:00 PM Monday, October 18th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, consideration of Deschutes County Adult Treatment Court grant. Trevor, thank you very much for joining us.
Good afternoon. My name is Trevor Stevens and I'm from Adult Pro and Probation. And I'm just here, commissioners, for your consideration of signature on the grant agreement. Back in June of this year, Judge Crutchley, Lisa Nichols, and myself came before you guys and we applied for the Justice Reinvestment, I mean, the Criminal Justice Commission's Drug Court Adult Treatment Court grant. And we actually received grant and award. And so this is just asking for your signature on that grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. The final award that we received was $468,313. And originally, back in 1921, by name, we only received $241. So we received quite a bit more than we had in the past. So we were excited with that award.
Great.
So I'm here to answer any questions you guys have, but that is what I'm here for today. Thank you.
Didn't they cut it back like a year ago or so?
They did when we received that grant. So originally, we were probably in the 400, like the high 300s, early, the low $400,000 range. And then they received quite a bit of cuts because they were looking at new courts around the state. And so our grant award in the 1921 by name dropped to 241. But we were back up to that 468 figures where we're at now. So it's much better than we had been in previous by names. And so we're really excited with that grant award, actually.
I know. It's such a fabulous program. It keeps families together. It keeps people working. And I'm so glad that they recognize the true value of it. So thank you, Trevor.
No problem. Thank you.
I mean, it's wonderful to know.
Do you have any sense of how they're paying for the increase or?
We actually received more of the allocation than other counties. So other counties received some reductions, but based on our application, they actually allocated more towards our county this time. So I think they received a little bit larger pool of money than they had previously, but they actually did make cuts to other county awards. And so we did receive more of that slice of the award.
Got it. So it's less about the pie growing and it's more about their people's slices?
And then certain, some, I think some treatment courts were put on provisional status, meaning that their courts were not meeting treatment court standards. And so some of those may have dropped off. And so that helped increase that pie a little bit as well. So it's kind of many different things that actually affect that number, so.
So we had a good conversation for the application of this. So I was wondering if we would have more participation today or not, but that's fine because we do understand the program. So this is the Adult Treatment Court program. And with what your comments just now is acknowledging that it's doing well, it's well-supported, and it's providing wonderful services for the people that choose to be in this program and graduate from it. So that's good to hear, the kind of the feedback of being invested in by the state because we know we're doing well here.
Yeah.
Trevor, maybe in a couple of months, we weren't able to go to the graduation ceremony a couple Mondays ago, but it'd be wonderful to hear, you know, how it's doing, what kind of reach. I mean, I know we've worked through COVID and everything, but it is such a.
We're seeing the intakes actually start to increase again. So we actually saw quite a decline in the intakes for a little bit. And we're seeing those intakes start to increase once again. And then there was more funds like kind of allocated towards supports for this grant, which was nice for housing. I mean, as we know, in central Oregon, housing is a major problem. And for these individuals in this program, it's even a more difficult issue. And so they provided additional supports for housing and just those kind of things that really can help make sure that these people are be able to be successful in their time. But I can definitely check in with Lisa Nichols and the judge, and maybe in a couple of months, we can come back and give you guys an update of where everything's at, so.
That'd be great.
And so I'm super excited that we've received this award. And yeah, I'm going to definitely support, accepting the award. So I just kind of have a few other like wide-ranging discussions, wide-ranging questions. One of the things I'm curious about is, so this is a pathway for people to get plugged into treatment. But you have to, basically, you have to, you have to end up in court to get into treatment. And I'm curious about, you know, from your perspective, as someone who works in this world, what are some of the other pathways that can get someone into treatment that, you know, maybe even upstream of them ending up in court?
I know the DA's office was working on a, that Fresh Start program that they were kind of working on. And that was an interesting way to kind of really connect individuals in at that point. And what we have been done with, I mean, it's still, there's still court involvement, like with the pre-trial programs and stuff, but it's not as severe as if someone received a charge and then went off to prison. So I mean, I think there's different levels. So I think, I mean, we're starting to see programs like that exist. I think the legislature is looking at a lot more pre-trial programs. And so that kind of tries to capture those individuals before they get sentenced. And then maybe their sentence won't be as harsh. Or if they complete the program, then they, that sentence gets dropped off at the end. So with drug court, most of these individuals are going to be people that have been involved with the criminal justice and for quite a bit of time. And so other avenues have not worked that well. So they use that judge as that kind of control mechanism to kind of help influence those people along that way. So I think something like the Fresh Start program that the DA's office did and those kind of programs really kind of work at that front end to really help make sure that those things really do take place, so.
It's helpful to understand all the different, all the different pathways.
Most of these individuals that we're working with with drug court, I mean, they're, you're talking high-risk, high-needs individuals. So on like a criminal risk assessment, they're coming out with a high risk or, I mean, medium to high. I mean, so they're, they probably have a lengthy criminal history. They have multiple charges. And so a lot of times, this may be one of the last chances to really try to work and see, can we help them really well along that path? And then at that point, can we change that behavior for that individual? And then with a lot of these individuals, they have children as well. So just ensuring that they have that support mechanism as well, I think, has really been beneficial for the drug court as well, so.
Great. Thank you.
No problem.
I understand.
So is there a motion?
I move authorization of chair's signature to sign the grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for providing two years of funding for the Deschutes County Adult Treatment Court, formerly known as the Family Drug Court.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you, commissioners.
So at this time, I'll acknowledge the lights are on, but the internet's down. Is that what's going on? So we have a recording of this meeting, but it's not probably being broadcast live on Zoom or whatever the status is. So this, yeah, okay. Item number two, so yeah, this will be for John Stark to join us. So at this time, we'll just stand by. I moved to item number three. So John Stark will come join us in this room when he's available. He's driving from Redmond to Bend because of the internet being down, unless that's him walking in right now. Nope? Okay. Item number three, then, we'll get back to discussion and consideration of board approval of Deschutes County Employee Benefits Plan. And I think that's, is Trigvy going to be part of this?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think we're well ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
And so I think we'll request staff to come down here just as soon as possible.
Okay. So it's just going to be one of those days. As I say, I was creating emails at my desk and putting, sending them, but they just went to the outbox and they didn't get anywhere today. So it's going to be one of those days.
They're on their way down.
Great.
Just a moment.
Yeah, so we'll just work through the memo. So this is a discussion of the plan, our Deschutes County Employee Benefits Plan for our health care. We just went right to the first item real quick. And the second item wasn't ready. So that, yeah, this really changed around, I guess.
They're driving down from Redmond, so.
Yeah.
Thank goodness she just had to come down the stairs, Kathleen.
Although apparently that's proving to be a little difficult. Okay.
Did you have a rough trip down the stairs?
No. So commissioners, thank you for allowing us to bring in front of you the employee health benefits plan renewal considerations for the 2022 plan year. Again, for the record, my name's Kathleen Hinman. I'm the HR director here. And with me, I have Trigvy Bulkin, who's our HR analyst, who staffs the Eback Committee for us, amongst many other things. So heading into the 2022 plan year, again, I would say that one of our big considerations on the health plan is the sort of unknown of COVID, how it's impacting us. Again, we see and anticipate a delay in care and how that may impact our costs going into the next year. So I'm just going to go through my memo and I'm talking about some of those highlights. One of the things that will be impacting our plan is, of course, our stop-loss coverage. We do have a rate cap of a 45% renewal. And so they are, they cannot provide us with a rate increase of more than 45%, which actually sounds like a lot, but it's actually a very good limit to have in your stop-loss contract. So we are looking at hitting that 45% rate increase due to the, the high-dollar claim that we do have currently. And we evaluated different levels of stop-loss, which I'm sure some of you may remember. We've looked at that in the past. We've looked at 250,000, kind of moving in $50,000 increments, all the way up to 600,000. I think we did get, end up getting a quote for 650,000 this year. That is the highest that any stop-loss carrier is willing to bid on us at the moment, which is a very high amount anyway. Most won't go above 650 in terms of stop-loss coverage. And so we are recommending that we maintain the $500,000 limit and accept the renewal and move forward on that one. Third-party administrator, so we are continuing with our Pacific Source, and we will see a 2.9% increase with them this year. We have had zero increase, percent increases over the last few years with them. So this was anticipated and, you know, we're accepting of that. We recommend that as well. Our claims cost, we continue to do, you know, well with our claims. We have, as mentioned, you know, we will see about a 6.3% increase due to the expected claims. One thing to note, as I mentioned earlier, sort of that unknown around COVID care and/or either the delay in care or current cost associated with the care for COVID itself. One of the other items that we see here is, I just wanted to mention, is that we're actually looking at working with our pharmacy benefit manager. And we have, they're sort of our TPA for our pharmacy side of things. And those costs, as we've seen for year over year, not just for us, but in the industry itself, that's where the increase in costs and really actually our high-dollar claims tend to come from. And we're working right now on kind of fine-tuning our contract with that PBM. And we actually will expect to result, some savings to see from that as well. So we're hoping that will offset some of our additional costs. And we'll be able to report on that more once we're further along with that. Per standard practice, the human resources evaluates recommended changes from our TPA, our PBM, all of our vendors and contractors in terms of either information that they feel is kind of, you know, best practices, and they recommend those. Changes in state or federal law, we evaluate that. And then also, there are times when our members, the members, either employees and/or family members, will request consideration of coverage be evaluated by the health plan and the committee. And so for a couple of years now, we've looked at physical therapy benefit changes, and we are actually making a recommendation on that. Alternative care benefits, we will be looking at that. That is actually being driven by a state requirement for us to remove the dollar limits on chiropractic and acupuncture care there. So we will need to move that to a visit limit on those two in particular. Levongo diabetic management program, this was kind of brought to us as a best practice and also to address the diabetic population that we have in supporting them with caring for that to, as a preventative, either not preventative, but to help manage the condition from it getting, continuing to get worse, for instance. Prescription insulin, that's another.
Kathleen, on that, it said the cost, the plan will only be charged for members who use that program?
Correct.
What is that cost?
The cost, Trigvy, do you have that? Trigvy will pull it up. It actually depends on, I think there's a per-member cost. And I will say that the dollar amount here in terms of the savings that are considered for that, there's a formula that goes into, you know, forecasting, right, or evaluating what we are controlling in terms of future costs, right? So it's a cost avoidance calculation, which is why we kind of consider a little bit more of a softer number. But at minimum, we expect that to be a cost neutral because we would get at least that dollar amount back.
Well, the benefit would be great.
Correct, yeah. And Trigvy will pull up the cost of that in particular. Sorry, moving on to the prescription insulin, we have, this is another state requirement. And actually, our plan is primarily in compliance with this. We just have to change our language a little bit so that it's a not to exceed $75 per 30-day supply. And so those are just one of the prescription changes that we have to, that we're required to comply with. And then the next one is the reproductive health services. And there was, the Reproductive Health Equity Act, and I apologize, that is actually, I should have clarified, that is the Reproductive Health Equity Act, allows for plans to be grandfathered in, keeping current language around abortion services. And we, our current contract language complies. However, there was a motion and vote under our Eback Committee to make a change to that plan. So we'll go through the matrix in particular and take feedback from the commissioners on moving forward in just a moment. Trigvy, do you have a number on that?
I do. So the cost of the Levongo program itself is $75 per participant per month. We estimated that there'd be about 29 participants, and that's based on our demographics and known number of diabetic members on our plan. And then there's an additional cost of about $40 per participant per month for diabetic supplies that's included in that program.
Okay, thank you.
And I should also mention on that is that we are recommending that be a two-year pilot program to evaluate the success of the program before confirming it as part of our benefit package. So that's the proposal that we'll discuss. And then, you know, annually, we receive feedback from primarily our TPA, but it could also be our PBM as well, on aligning language in our health plan, just sort of updating it to either current practices, clarifications, or changes. These are not intended to impact the benefit themselves, but just sort of modernizing the health plan. One example is prior authorization to, and pre-authorization, right? And actually, which one is the appropriate one, Trigvy?
It's prior authorization.
So we're going through our plan and moving from pre-authorization to prior authorizations. It's that type of change that we're recommending. Some additional requests that came before the HR team and Eback would be adding fertility services as an eligible covered expense. And so we evaluated that. And both HR staff and Eback supported not making a change at this time. That was primarily due to cost and the benefit setup. Dulles services, that was another one that we were asked to evaluate, and it is not being recommended by either HR or Eback. That primarily has to do with the fact that doulas are not considered medical providers and generally not covered under medical benefits. And in fact, Pacific Source wouldn't be able to pay them under our plan. They are covered under the flexible spending account, so members can still utilize those services with some sort of benefit there. The dental plan annual limit, we were asked to benchmark our dental plan. How are we doing? Are we competitive? What do others, other plans look like? And we evaluated that at $2,000 per member. We are a competitive plan. Both HR and Eback support that, not making a change to the dental plan. There was a proposal from, actually, AFSME on the, to Eback about evaluating the part-time buy-up to the standard plan. So our current part-time employees are eligible for the high deductible health plan at the same rate as a full-time employee is available to purchase the standard plan or the high-deductible plan. And what was presented, HR staff and Eback did not support making a change at that point, but we did discuss, you know, continuing discussions on the topic. So turning to the matrix of consideration where we will need commissioner feedback, we'll just kind of move down that matrix if that works.
So we may be able to just, is there any discussion other than item number four, which is the reproductive health item? Do you want to go through each one?
I was supportive of all of them. So I don't need to go through.
Commissioner Dare?
No, I think I've already had my questions answered about the other elements, so I'm fine with it. I, you know, seems like we've made some decisions. You know, fertility services, I know they're extremely expensive. And if you're, if you're in that position, it's really, it can be overwhelming. But both committees said no, so I get it.
It is. And Commissioner Dare, we actually did commit to continuing to evaluate that because we are seeing movement in terms of when we evaluated the benchmarking, that other plans are looking to add that for a couple of reasons, primarily for attracting and retaining, and specifically for diversity, equity, inclusion purposes, right? And so supporting the populations that would especially need that, for instance. So we have committed to continuing that conversation as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So then, as I say, we do have item number four, covered expenses for reproductive health. We have media attention on this, and I think the position of the three board members are pretty clear right now. Is there any discussion on this?
No, I'm clear, I believe.
Yeah, so as I say.
I'd like to keep it grandfathered in, the RH grandfathered in.
And as, and I would also, so.
I thought of another way to frame my points on this, so I'd be happy to say a little bit about that. I guess I want to remind the Board of Commissioners that this is, this is an employee benefit policy. This is not a, this is not a policy to outlaw abortion or ban or prohibit people from getting abortions. We're not deciding that with this policy. What this decision says, if we do not remove the exclusion for abortion and add the service as covered, what this decision says is that in the very rare situation where an employee decides they need an abortion for medical or other reasons, we, as their health insurance provider, will not support their choice, and we will make them find some other way to pay for the procedures that they determine that they need. So I, I would like to support the employee, the Eback's recommendation, but if, I don't anticipate that anything has changed since last week. I just want to put on the record that everyone should understand that this is, this is not some grand level, you know, state legislative decision to outlaw abortion. This is a decision to deny people benefits and coverage.
Well, yeah, thank you very much. One of the items I was able to pull out here, so case management referring to very complicated, high utilization situations, high-risk obstetric or neonatal care. So I mean, it's understood that, you know, these can be very touchy situations, very personal, very, you know, life-changing, referring to obstetric or neonatal care also. So we do have support for, you know, for medical needs of the family. This is just one of those, one of those lines that become very divisive or, you know, can really bring out the positions from folks. But yeah, I think we've set our piece here at this time. So with that, thank you very much for the memo, the. So with that, thank you very much for the memo, the choices being made. Is there a motion for, you know, accepting this for the employee benefits plan with the decision clarified?
I move we approve the county administrator plan sponsor of our Deschutes County Employed Medical Benefits Documents and Service Agreement for the 2020 year, including A, as it's so described on the benefit plan, changes. A, which is keeping the current plan language as our plan meets the requirements under RHA due to the grandfather status.
And I'll second it for that topic. Is there any other discussion?
Just to clarify, I will be voting no. And it does not mean that I don't support all of the other coverage changes recommended and brought forward by HR and the Eback. On that one issue, I would like to see the Eback's recommendation included.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. And at this time, we'll go back to our item number two. So this will be the Ready Enterprise Zone Extended Abatement Agreement with Pacific Coast Building Supply. John Stark, thanks for joining us. Thank you for bringing, being in person today, sorry. I say bringing yourself in person, but that wasn't going to work, yeah.
I made it.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Stark, Senior Director, Redmond Economic Development, and Enterprise Zone Manager for the Greater Redmond Enterprise Zone. First, let me say I did jump in the car literally a few minutes ago and did not speed to get here. But I did not come in slacks like you usually see me dressed up a little bit, thinking you were only going to see the top half of your body. But, so you got jeans today, so forgive my casual attire. But I'm here in spirit and in person nonetheless. So before you today is an Enterprise Zone Extended Abatement Agreement for Pacific Coast Supply. They're a building materials dealer dealing with roofing and wall systems and other equipment supporting a lot of the building activity that's happening throughout Central Oregon, both commercial and residential. The business has been around, used to be a lumber company back clear back to the 50s, and has grown to 40-plus locations across the Pacific Northwest, or the West, I should say, west of the Rockies. And so this is an additional location for them. They purchased about 15 acres of the city's former public work site where near the water tire is at 11th and Antler over the last couple of months. And they plan on delivering a 30,000-square-foot building, roughly a value of about $3 million, and putting about a million dollars' worth of equipment in it. They've asked for an extended abatement, which is why we're here before you today. The standard three-year Enterprise Zone program is an as-of-right for traded-sector businesses adding jobs and necessary capital investment. But to receive a fourth and fifth-year extended abatement, they must pay wages north of the county average, the most recent posted, which is $71,393. And that's a loaded wage. So we really should be calling that a compensation standard as opposed to a wage standard because that's 150% of the county's average wage, and this company does exceed that. And then in Redmond, for those companies that have a majority of their positions exceeding that value, they'll offer four and five years extended abatement. And for those that have a majority of those positions that fall under, but still the net gain of those positions as an aggregate exceeds it, then they receive four years. So we award longer terms to companies that pay more people those higher wages. But still, the sum total of those 15 positions will, in aggregate, exceed that $71,393 per year compensation standard. So the company is asking for an extended abatement. City of Redmond approved last Tuesday unanimously as a zone sponsor to offer that fourth year. In the staff report that you've received, there is a value in there for what the tax collections or the fiscal impact would be to the county based on your apportionment of the taxes. We did the same for Redmond when we met with them. And so I don't have that sheet of paper in front of me. I don't remember what the number was, but it is in your packet today.
$3,400.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So that's an annual amount that would happen over the four years, unless they add equipment in the second and third year, in which case they could add another period of time to that particular set of equipment. Wouldn't add time to this initial investment. And so before you today is an Enterprise Zone Agreement that establishes a zone sponsor agreement that they'll create these jobs for this four-year tax abatement. And the company signs off on that, knowing that they've got to meet those obligations or forfeit the taxes. If they don't meet the obligations, then yes, we go back and claw those taxes back. So they do, they are on the hook to create these jobs and maintain them throughout the period or the term of the exemption. So I think I've covered everything, but if I haven't, please feel free to ask any questions.
Actually, and reading the document, Redmond is paying $12,000 a year.
That's correct. Yeah, yours is a smaller portion. I think it, yeah, I don't have it in front of me. It should have been in the year.
Forgoing $12,000 a year. And, yeah, the foregoing taxes for us, you know, relative to the economic benefit to the community of this project, I don't have any, I don't have any concerns about foregoing that small amount of tax.
If I was to say some of those 15 people are going to own houses that generate their own property taxes and all the supply chain that supports them, so, but you're exactly correct, Commissioner. There's a ripple effect for all of this.
Well, and spinning up the building construction supplies is going to be very valuable at this time also. So this is a four-year abatement that they're asking for. I'm really, very supportive of this, especially over at that East Redmond location. Really getting some critical mass over there for some great businesses. The infrastructure is just building out, so very exciting. As to say, as a commissioner and as a group that represent the east, the lands on the east side of Redmond, the next one's over, I do want to work with the, you know, kind of the community culture of the dispersed camping and be a real strong advocate for empowering those businesses not to be impacted directly. And we want to help people that need help, obviously, but, you know, I'm just acknowledging that, that this is that location on the east side of Redmond also.
Definitely. I move that we approve the agreement for the Oregon Enterprise Zone Extended Abatement for the Pacific Coast Supply.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you for joining us in person.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time today and your support for this program and this company coming in.
Right.
Have a great day.
Yes, thanks for driving down, and I'm glad you didn't get stopped.
He said he drove the speed limit. Okay, item number four, FY '22 Q2 discretionary grant program. So this is our discussion of requests for discretionary grants. Big binder.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Laura Skundrick, Administrative Services. So each quarter, the Board of Commissioners reviews applications submitted to the Deschutes County Discretionary Grant Program and makes awards accordingly. So today, the Board will consider what's been made for the beginning or about the second quarter of fiscal year 2002. So if you'd like, we can get started at the top, and I'll make this a bit bigger so we can follow along here. There we go, is that better? Okay. So starting with Ben next, they are requesting $1,800. This would help to provide financial assistance for participants needing scholarship funding to attend their Leadership Bend program, which is provided by the Department of Labor and Commerce.
I'm comfortable splitting that number by thirds, so that would be a $600 deal. For myself, 600. Not speaking for everybody.
I can only do 300. I'm on a serious budget.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, I've got some variables in mind. We'll see what happens, yeah.
I know, I was like, oh, no.
You can put me down for five.
500.
Okay, numbers.
All right, thank you. Next up is the Central Oregon Public Safety Chaplaincy. They are requesting $10,000 today to provide their ongoing training, education for their chaplains, their first responders, and community members, as well as a retreat opportunity for their chaplains and first responders.
So, and I left this one undecided, so that's why I wasn't too worried about the budget yet because I didn't think of dividing that by three.
I know their work in the community has been unbelievable. And just talking to someone the other day, not from this group, but actually from outside the group, Sisters just lost someone to an overdose. Someone who had just graduated from high school. And remember, last year, we lost, well, three girls died in that horrific car accident, but two of them were Sisters girls. So I know that they have their hands full. We're having, what is it, we're having, you know, a lot of overdoses, a lot of, fortunately, we haven't had as many deaths, but we are having a lot of overdoses in our community. So I know that they are on the forefront of trying to help out.
Yes, and we did see, we had the data for last year, in 2020, they saw a huge increase in their services being needed. I haven't seen their data for this year yet, but I think a lot of that was due to the pandemic and a lot of that trauma, so.
So, yeah, so that's kind of a big request.
Right, I know, it's huge.
It is, it's, you know, I'm supportive, but it's a daunting number. And I did actually want to ask, in the guidance information that we put out to applicants, do we have a maximum, or do we have a suggested range or anything like that?
Not for this application, no. I think it says typically awards are right around the $2,500 mark, but there is no limit.
Okay.
Happy to, if the board would like to have that discussion, we could-
No, I mean, that in and of itself is a helpful piece of information for people. Typically, awards are certain-
Yeah, for, well, and this program can go different directions also, as in, you know, the lottery revenue that comes to us and the spreadsheet, how we split this out. As I say, I think the numbers have been bigger in the past. We've been comfortable leaving it at $60,000 for discretionary the last few budget cycles, which is $20,000 per Commissioner. But it could be other numbers, this is, you know. So if we want to keep it in this fund, I would be comfortable choosing $1,000 out of my, you know, this allocation. But we might want to subsidize it with something else, too.
Right. I would be happy to do 1,000 because I, I know it has to be, the need is there.
Trying to keep myself within, within a diet. I was thinking 750.
And then, as I say, I mean, if, if there's connections, or if, you know, I mean, maybe there's a way to... Do they get any other revenue through United Way, do you know? Because that's kind of the pool that we invest in also. So there's a conversation there. We could learn more.
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah. I'd be available to communicate.
And I know our, Christie's Department is looking to see if we have anything that they could use for an office because they do feel like they need an office. So I know we may be able to help them that way, too.
Yeah, so we'll communicate with them here. There you go.
All right, thank you. Moving forward, Clear Alliance is requesting $3,000. This would help them develop a pre-TMEC course, which is Tobacco, Marijuana, and E-Cigarette for kindergarten through fifth graders. That would be available on their website for families to access.
So, and I just don't have the connections to that program as much anymore, so I'm hesitant to invest at this time.
I, I thought I asked about this last time, but I, you know, maybe I didn't. But I would really like to see metrics of, you know, performance metrics for their programming. I mean, we know that, we know that there's a lot of people who are very concerned about substance abuse and... But that doesn't necessarily mean that the prevention efforts that they implement are effective and are having an impact. So, I mean, even just, you know, data showing that the resources that they have been producing in the past are being used, you know, like, we had this many, you know, we had this many people, you know, get on our website and view this, you know, view this video or something like that. So I'm hesitant to invest in this, in this proposal at this time without a little bit more evidence of the effectiveness of the program.
I know that Mandy is clearly on the forefront. And after talking with Rob Ovett this morning about, I believe there are now nine counties in the state that are being incredibly impacted by what's going on out there with the illegal operations. And I'll do 750.
Okay. So next up, we have Council on Aging. They are requesting $3,000. They are currently undergoing extensive renovations to update the previous Bend Community Center, which will serve as their new senior services center and their client services headquarters. So these upgrades, this funding would include upgrades to their public restrooms, including plumbing repairs, new toilets, flooring and fixtures, and ADA compliance stalls to better serve their clients.
So we're seeing them each time, and I'm happy to support. They've got a big facility project that they're working on, and it's just one project after another at this time. But at some point, they'll be kind of finalized and moved into that nice building. So as I say, I'm very supportive, and $1,000 is fine for me on that one. Which means it's about the amount of a, or no, two commercial-grade toilets, I was thinking. I was just looking at their budget.
They can name one after you.
How lucky are you?
Let's not go any farther on that.
I notice, yes.
I'm good for one toilet.
So there you go.
And I'm good for $300.
All right, we have Dawn's House next. They are requesting $2,000. They support displaced or homeless women and families recovering from addiction or alcoholism and seeking long-term recovery. So these funds would support their emergency services program where they provide those clients with basic needs such as food, clothing, hygiene items, and winter gear. So also, for your visibility, Central Oregon Health Council has agreed to match 100% of these funds awarded through this proposal today.
500 for me.
600 for me, please.
So it's not that I don't love this program, but I'm dealing with a budget.
Yep.
So anyway, I'll do 400.
Thank you.
That gets them pretty close.
Next up, we have the Deschutes River Recreation Homesites Neighbors Club. They are requesting $1,500. This is a nonprofit, community-based organization, and their meetings take place in an older building used for lots of other purposes as well. They're requesting this funding to replace the furnace, as the current one is inefficient and loud, which makes their meetings difficult.
We had a community development department code, code-compliance kind of seminar there for the community.
Oh, okay.
Just, yeah, I think it was in the spring. And we ended up doing it outside because of COVID, but, yeah, it was, it got chilly as the meeting went on that night, so. But I've been to that building many times.
And I did want to comment that I did ask Laura, because it was not a 501(c)(3), oh, it was a (c)(7), correct? And according to legal, that is still eligible for our funding, so. I know, I thought that, I was just like, wow, this is interesting. So did you give an amount?
No, I, I'm seeing what you guys think from the application. I mean, some amount, I don't know. Budget is kind of what I was thinking, too.
I sort of see this as a neighborhood facility, which I would like to see the neighborhood, you know, keep up. But, yeah, just in comparison to some of the other projects that have, you know, that they serve such a broad geography or a broad slice of the population of the community, I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see- community, I, I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a neighborhood facility like this cover their costs in another way.
Well, it's, it's great, though. They have raised $3,600. And, you know, they're trying to get this funded.
$250 for myself. Just to get him something.
And I'll do 250 also.
Thank you. Next up is Embers Wildflower Bunny Rescue and Animal Sanctuary. We saw them in our Spence, our Spay and Neuter Grant Program as well. They are requesting $2,000 to build an enclosed outdoor exercise area for their rabbits. And this would also provide space for future events and potential adopting families to spend time with their animals.
What date was that, $1,580 that they were awarded for the spay and neuter grant? Was that this summer? Wasn't it just a little bit ago?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I believe it was July.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I love bunnies, but I, I mean, really, they're wonderful pets. I've had some. But I think I should pass, because I'm, I'm.
I'm gonna pass also.
Pass, I'm running out of funds.
See the bunny's exercising all over my yard every day.
I see the strategic value in this project. I, you know, we did just make that spay and neuter grant a little while ago, but I would put in 200.
Thank you.
250.
Great. Next up is Lapine Community Kitchen. They're requesting $2,500 to put toward the purchase of a deep fryer. This would be used for their meal, their everyday meal programs, as well as a potential fish fry fundraiser. They are, they noted in their application, they're exploring new opportunities for fundraising. So this could support that.
I'm not going to support a frying machine at this.
No, I know. I just went, oh my gosh, we have a what, 40% obesity in our country? I mean, nobody loves fried chicken more than me, but I didn't eat it for like, five decades. And now I'll have it once in a while. But I know it's really bad for you.
I mean, I, I've seen, I've seen the good meals that they can produce with the, the kitchen equipment that they have without a fryer. So I, I.
We're all coming at the same conclusion here, it looks like.
I would, I would support some other kind of infrastructure for that, but would like, would love it to support healthier meals.
The next big ask or something, because I'm like, oh, no.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there's something else that, you know, one of those, whatever.
Okay.
I don't know. All those equipment things that I have in my kitchen.
You all came to that conclusion.
All right. Next, we have Lines for Life. They are requesting $1,800. These funds would fully fund one work-study scholarship for a youth line volunteer, where they're working to eliminate possible barriers for youth volunteers in marginalized communities. I did reach out to our prevention program supervisor in health services, Jessica Jax, for her feedback on this program. She confirmed that this work is very complimentary to the work that they're doing. And it does create, help to create a comprehensive approach through their collective partnership. And the Central Oregon branch of Lines for Life has been pivotal at engaging our youth for their peer-to-peer presentations. She was very supportive of the.
No, I've been there for their, some of their programs. So, right. I know they, it's, what is it, the second leading cause of death for young people in our country is suicide. And definitely, this program is, has a long track history. I'll do 600 for it.
I'll also do 600.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm hesitant to support, just because it's not quite, I mean, it's statewide influence, but not quite the local program that I've envisioned investing in. So let's leave it at that, then.
Next is the Rising Stars Preschool. They are located in Lapine. They are requesting $2,000 for their scholarship program, which provides financial assistance to low-income families at a reduced rate for their monthly tuition. So this would help allow them to serve additional families needing childcare. And their scholarship program offers families either 50% or 25% discount on tuition from September through May. And this is a preschool for three- to four-year-olds.
So I called, spoke to the applicant, Alyssa Loner, today. I think I know her in passing from the town, but I don't know her specifically. And she just mentioned that they, they do have slots for like, 43 kids in there, teachers and teacher aides. So this is very much a preschool program, not a daycare. There's three-hour programs, three and four-year-olds. So I just learned a little bit more about the program. And then they also have this comment in here, that they receive high praise from the kindergarten teachers and the readiness of the students, with the increased presence of the students and the parents' involvement with school activity. So there was, you know, it's a little bit of a positive environment for preschool in Lapine.
No, I, I loved the program. I loved her description. I, I thought, well, this is really great. And actually giving scholarships out to the community is really important. So, yeah, they have a capacity up to 48.
So budget-wise, I, I can do 750 is what I was thinking. And.
Oh, good.
Maybe the number.
I'll do 250. So at least she's gonna have some scholarships available?
I'll do 600.
Great. Thank you. Next is the Seed to Table. They are a farm located in Sisters, requesting $2,000 for their Summer on the Farm Education Series, which will be open to the public next summer, 2022. They provide educational engagement during the summer for students and their families, providing different learning opportunities within science, math, and writing, as well as an opportunity to cook, prepare, and eat farm-fresh produce. They estimate about 150 families will visit the farm for their programming next summer.
Well, considering what food inflation is going to be, you know, what is it, over 10% now for food? And especially these types of, I've been there. It's, she has an amazing program. I mean, oh my gosh, it's, it's unbelievable, all the different things that she raises and what she does with it, and bringing the community in. So it's, you know, food just doesn't get to the market. It actually grows, a lot of it grows in the ground. So I love her program. I can, I can do $500 for it.
And that's what I have, 500 also.
I'll do 600.
Thank you. Great. Next up is the.
Look at those numbers coming in. Head-to-head race here, real close.
The Tower Theater Foundation is requesting $1,700 to print banners that will hang throughout the Old Mill District in order to promote their Performing Arts Center, and to provide visibility for them in a high-traffic area, in an attempt to reach a broad new audience. And their partnership with Old Mill includes the mounting and storing the banners. So this funding would support the actual printing.
You can count me in for 400.
I can only do 100.
50.
250?
50. Thank you.
So then, yeah, those are, it's multi-year project, too. So that's exciting. It'll buy a set of banners, and it'll be in the rotation for a couple of years, they mentioned.
And I might add, the person who filled out the application with their calligraphy, it is so beautiful. Oh my gosh, I looked at that and went, oh, Sharon, beautiful writing.
Yeah, I know. She, she does a good job.
We could all take calligraphy class, maybe.
There you go. Our last one here, in our general category, is Wildfire Media. They are requesting $2,000 toward providing a free holiday photo shoot for any and all individuals or families, as a way to engage their talented vendors and benefit local residents. So they plan to engage all residents and want to target their outreach to groups like college students, pet owners, foster children and families, veterans, seniors, and houseless residents. They plan to secure a location in Bend and Redmond, provide food and beverages, and solicit local high school music departments for entertaining the waiting groups. And this would take place in, on a couple of dates in November, next month.
So I was kind of concluding that this could be an independent effort that's, that I'm not going to invest in.
This is a very nice service to offer to people, but I felt like the other projects more, that I put funding into were more urgent.
And I will agree with that comment.
Thank you. We can move down to our fundraising requests.
Laura, can I, could I just ask a question? Or, so are you, you're going to be in communication with each one of these applicants after this process?
Correct.
The preschool and the Tower Theater, can we make sure that they're aware of the ARPA Business Assistance opportunity that's coming up not too far off? I am guessing that both of those, both of those businesses, or both of those organizations are, got hammered during COVID. And so, giving them, giving them a chance to get some, some aid to, to make them more whole again, I think would, just want to make sure that they're aware of that opportunity.
Okay. I'd be happy to mention that. So our first fundraising request from Heart of Oregon, they are requesting $2,000. This would support their peer-to-peer fundraising campaign, which would support job skills training and workforce development for young adults. This includes projects that benefit the broader community, such as Veterans Village, wildfire fuels reduction, and restoration of public lands, recreation sites. Their goal is to raise $15,000 through this campaign. And this will be their first time using this online platform, which they believe, they predict will increase their ability to raise funds directly in the future.
They're doing some of the work at the Veterans Village. I mean, they are using all youth plus JbarJ. I'm wondering, could, could we do 2,500 instead of, what are they, they're asking for 2,000? Is it possible? And just say, we were so appreciative of knowing that we have the youth of our county that are stepping up to get the village ready? I mean, the kids were so wonderful. And several of them made the comment to me, well, you know, the veterans saved us, so we're here to, you know, build their homes for. And I just thought, what a wonderful education, their learning skills, and, and they're helping the whole community out. I mean, do we really only have 10,000 something left in this fund?
That was my, that was my one concern that we.
Right. If we, I know.
And I, if I could offer one other thing, so I was asked to sit on the advisory board for a program that's called, a program called Oregon Conservation Corps, that's coming out of SB 762, that will basically pump $10 million into, you know, high, high-fire-risk communities around the state through Conservation Corps programs. And the reason I agreed to sit on that board was to ensure that Heart of Oregon and other entities here in, in our community had a chance to, to secure some of that funds and put it to work on the ground here. So I, you know, I'm foreseeing an opportunity to be helpful to them financially in the future. And so I, I'd feel okay just doing the 2,000 that they asked for and leaving it at that.
So he's negotiating back to their ask. Well, and I support that, too, just knowing the funds. I'm excited about Heart of Oregon Corps, as I say, the same reasons. You know, they've, they've got a long history. It's a Central Oregon effort that's, that's been in place for many years. And it's got a growth path. So I do support the $2,000, and we'll just leave it at this.
Okay, we won't overspend. I do want to, I want them to, I think it would be, you know, so appropriate to thank them. And JbarJ.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you could send them a letter, a thank you letter, too.
Oh, I'm, I'm thinking I'll send them a little personal thank you note. I just bought some more cards. So yes, time to write some more little notes. But no, it's great. Thank, thank the community, you know.
They do a lot of great work.
Yeah.
All right, our last fundraising request today is from Hospice of Redmond for $2,500. This would support the Festival of Trees fundraiser that they do annually. This year, they are again offering the virtual option, the tour of trees, and then also an in-person option, where you can grab a map and take a self-guided tour of the decorated trees. Then they hold a virtual auction for the trees, and the proceeds are used to support hospice programs that are not supported by Medicare or private insurance.
It was wonderful to see that this program has been approved by the IRS since 1982. No, I mean, and what they do for the community, I think it's, you know, to do their $2,500 request, I think it's incredibly appropriate. They're, yeah, they're such a necessity for our, the whole culture of Deschutes County.
So I want to show support also, maybe at that $2,000 level again, but that's just, just to rein it in a little bit. I mean, I'm very supportive of their efforts.
Do we, so I'm seeing the, the history of past grants. And I'm curious, so it says they've received discretionary grants in the past. Were they, were those this fundraising type, or were they project type?
They were, I believe, majority, if not all, were probably for the, this fundraiser.
Yeah, long history of the same request.
Right, right, okay.
I know, we, you guys, going back, we were doing 2,500 in 19 and 18. So I really feel like if they're asking for 2,500, and with what, 10% inflation, we're looking out there at a lot of items. Yeah, I do, I don't think, I think we should fully fund them at the 2,500.
We have, but we have no, no idea what's, what fundraising event requests are going to come in, in, in the third and fourth quarter. Is there any past experience that, that?
That's, I haven't been keeping track of, like, the more requests.
Is there like a rush in the fourth quarter, or anything like that? I mean.
Well, sometimes we're, we had a fifth quarter, remember? A year ago, we were able to actually do funding with a fifth quarter.
Yeah. So that's why, this is pretty flexible.
Yeah, people got, we, what did we choose? Like, how many? People got $1,718 because we had that fifth quarter. Thank goodness.
Well, so I'm supportive, getting back to that $2,500 number. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, sorry, but yeah, I'm looking at this going, we're going to go down to 2,000? And we've got major inflation? No.
Okay, I can go with the 2,500. But that does leave only 6,000 in that bottom line for two, two more quarters. And I would hate for, you know, I'd hate for us to arrive, you know, in those, in those last two quarters, when every, everybody says, COVID, COVID's letting up. Now we can do our big fundraising event. And please help us. And we must have nothing left to give.
It's a pool of dollars. We allocate it through the spreadsheet. We allocate this to this effort. But we could move other money around if it's time to invest. You know, the dollars are flexible. So this could be a bigger fund if, if it's time to do that. But we'll make, we'll have that discussion if we need to.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. It's like every time we turn around, you're giving us a book like this. It's amazing how time goes so quick these days.
Yes, thank you, Laura, for the excellent book.
Yes, you're welcome.
Is there anything else for this meeting? Other items?
Since, I'll go back, but on Thursday last week, I had, I attended two things that might be of interest. One was a field trip with the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project. It was very, very cold. And we went out and checked out some of these flat, like, bottom basin cold, cold air sinks where lodgepole pine grows. And that group is trying to finalize some recommendations on how you, how you manage the hundreds of thousands of acres of lodgepole pine on the Deschutes National Forest to, to balance wildfire protection needs, you know, industry needs, and wildlife needs. And that they're getting pretty close on those recommendations, which is exciting. The other, the other meeting on Thursday was, so I've also, I was asked to sit on the, the state's Community Renewable Energy Program Advisory Board. So this is a group that's going to be, it may or may not be involved in the direct review of applications, but we're kind of setting the parameters for our program that's going to put $50 million out over the next, I believe, three years from this biennium. There was $50 million set aside this biennium for community renewable energy projects, and for energy resiliency projects, is what they were, they were calling them. And I think that, you know, people on the coast are thinking about tsunamis, and thinking, you know, people in the valley are thinking about the Cascade event and things like that. So I'm not quite sure what energy resiliency projects mean for us here, besides, you know, resiliency to, to wildfire impacts. But that's, that's going to be the kind of... But, um, that, that's, that's gonna be the kind of exploratory part of the work of that advisory board. But I, uh, one of the reasons I wanted, I was, I said I would sit on that is so that I could advocate for biomass thermal energy projects, like the one at Mount Bachelor.
So, one of the thoughts on that is resiliency. The engineer from Mid-State Electric, remember, he did that application that we pre, pre-authorized or whatever for the FEMA dollars. But he mentioned taking like a 69 kilovolt line, going to 110, having a stronger backbone, but also being able to switch segments on and off remotely, which is the power safety, public's power system shut-off, whatever, PSPS. Uh, but so I think that may be as simple as that, you know? And I'm sure every time you touch something, it's gonna be a million dollars, so. But it may be some of that PSPS infrastructure in our utility grid, electricity.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Maybe, I'm just thinking.
Like, I'm, they, they talked a lot about resiliency, but this is still within this package called the Community Renewable Energy Program. So, like, I'm not sure whether they're just trying to find those projects that are, you know, basically like distributed generation, renewable backup in case, you know, major, you know, there's major grid problems or whether they're looking for something else. But more to be, more to be discovered on it.
And then geothermal.
Yeah.
Millions of dollars there. And we'll see if we can make electricity off the side of Newberry.
Hundreds of millions.
Um, we had the Central Oregon Health Council meeting last Thursday. I want to thank Kathleen Hinman for giving a presentation on our self-insured plan. I thought it was really important for that group of people to know that the plan actually really works. And in fact, several people within that group were really, um, gonna get, reach out to her and get more details. So, I thought that was, um, you know, definitely a worthwhile, um, sharing of information, what the county has learned in the history of our, you know, we've got historical perspective and what our costs have been and everything. And then also at that time, Donna Mills actually announced she's going to be retiring. So, there will be an executive search for Donna within the next bid. So, we, we had a meeting on that. So, it, you know, Donna's been an outstanding leader. And when she took the job, it, finance wasn't even in one of the questions. Unfortunately, Donna has a lot of tremendous finance experience. So, um, she will have big shoes to fill.
She's not leaving here when she retires, is she?
She didn't say that. She just said she was retiring.
I was able, you want to keep her around? On Thursday, I was able to attend the Canal Commons kind of grand opening. So, that was a Pacific Crest Partners housing. And there's two buildings of like 24, another one of 12 and 36 coming online. So, there's, uh, this was a real challenging parcel over in the northeast part of Bend that they were able to cut the ribbon on that and get it started. And then Friday afternoon, at the end of the day, Commissioner Chang and I cross paths. Habitat Cottage has opened house. So, that was a, another, and we had been there previously, but this was with people in the, in the houses now. Last one being completed, a real positive, kind of a community celebration of people living in those habitat homes. So, it was nice to see. Okay.
Amazing what these affordable housing groups can do if you just give them a little piece of land somewhere. It's take-home, a take-home message for me from those couple of projects you mentioned.
Well, I could build a cost-effective house if I was given land, too. We gotta, uh, so as I say, I mean, that's kind of a trigger when we, we gotta remember it's the land that's the start of this. And you, you mentioned before that, you know, it's not, it can't be the land because houses are too costly. But, yeah, I'm just saying.
You get them, you get them a piece of land and then they use it very efficiently to produce a lot of units per, per acre. That's, that's part of the magic.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I actually personally was, I had just met someone who bought a, um, home to rent in Bend. And so, I asked this person if they could let me know what is the cost difference? Because of 30% of the short-term rental homes in Bend, um, you know, that's 30%. So, you know, this is a brand-new person entering the market. And what is it that they are going to expect? So, just for a comparison, I just thought it would be, you know, are those homes the short-term? Are they rented like, do you count on 60% of the time? Is that still what you're gonna, why so many people go that way? So that it's so much more cost effective, uh, you know, it's much more, you know, bottom line is increased immensely. So, I'll, I'll, it'll be fascinating to see what the numbers come back at.
I'm sorry, I missed the original.
The total number of.
30% is.
Well, 30% of the homes in Bend, I've told, are short-term rentals. Per, you know, only so many per block, so many per neighborhood. And, um, you know, 30% seems like so many, but there must be economic justification for that. And so, I was just trying to find out, you know, is it like, do you get an extra 30,000 a year if you're doing a short-term rental? What is, what is?
In the business case of the ownership making money?
They make tons more money on a short-term rental than a long-term rental.
Okay, but I want to know tons. I want to know dollars. I want to know exactly how much, you know, what is the difference? So.
I mean, uh, the short-term rentals that are next door to me, um, talking to the owner at one point in time, I, I basically got the impression that, uh, he just had to fill those homes three weekends of the year, or three weekends of the month. You know, not even any, not even any, uh, of the weekdays to make more than he could have rented that house for. Um, you know, long-term, as a long-term rental per month. So, it's, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of money. And that's, that's why there are so many of them. And, um, that 30% number seems extremely high to me, but, uh, I guess one of the ways that could have happened is that, um, when, when they put the, the density cap in place, pretty much everyone who already had a vacation rental was grandfathered in. So, uh, you know, it, otherwise, it's hard to imagine that, you know, on any given block, a third of the houses, uh, you know, could be, could be vacation rentals at the same time that you have this 250-foot, uh, distance requirement. But I, that, that would be the one way that I could imagine that that happened is just so, there were so many, at such a density that were grandfathered in that you got to that kind of number.
Well, I do know, um, local rents are going up. So, because you, you hear about it all the time, you know, for the long term. But maybe the other ones are even going up faster, so. It'll just be interesting feedback.
Sounds like the, 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 the price for the vacation rentals, you know, that, that, the fee they charge is going up as well. I mean, um, certainly seems that way from our transient room tax revenue collections, but, yeah.
So, candidate advisory panel tonight at, what, 6:00 in this room? So, we'll.
Yes.
That'll be another public meeting. Maybe we'll be online by then. Is there anything else, Nick? Any other items?
Nothing else from me, commissioners.
Okay, anything else for, no executive sessions. Seeing nothing else, we'll call meeting adjourned.